Good afternoon. Are you ready? I'd like to call this meeting to order and I'd like to begin by apologizing to everyone for my delay. My doctor's appointment went a little longer than I expected. So with that, we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'd like to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to lead us in prayer? Okay, thank you Linda.
Dear Father, we just thank you for all the wonderful blessings that you give us every day. We thank you for the glorious rain. We needed it and we appreciate it so much. Help us today with the decisions that we make, that it all be for the good of the people of Torrance County. These things we ask in the name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. I'd like to call now for a motion to approve the meeting agenda. Thank you. There's a motion on the table. Is there a second?
There's a second.
It's being moved in seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. We will now begin with item 1, 2012-13 interim budget discussion and approval.
Attorney Commissioner, if you have, look for you the interim budget that we put together from all the departments. I also left a copy of a letter from DFA there and I wanted to draw your attention to that. Every two years DFA reclassifies the counties based on the population and net taxable property valuations. We have moved from a B under classification to a B over classification. So with that moves up the maximum for the elected officials salaries and that's listed on the, the second page of that. So I just wanted to draw your attention to that.
Tracy, would you mind explaining the difference in that for us, please?
The difference between, well, our valuations went up, that's where our classification increased, but that also means the elected official salaries. Before, the commission salary was sixteen to eighty-two was the max. Now the maximum is twenty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars. The county treasurer, assessor, and clerk were all at forty-nine thousand thirty-one dollars. Now they're at fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. The sheriff's salary max goes from fifty-one thousand to seventy-seven to a maximum of fifty-nine thousand six ninety-nine. And the probate goes from eleven thousand four hundred and sixteen to twenty thousand twenty-four dollars. That just raises the max, the maximum, the statutory maximum that elected officials can be paid in each county and it's based on a classification. There was an interesting note, I thought, at the bottom, that per the attorney general's opinion, that when a classification has been fixed, a reduction of assets does not change such classification. So we are now a B over county until we reach valuation to become a classic county, which won't be met.
That means that we'll never be back to a B under, correct?
That's how I read it, it's part of the note that's at the bottom, based on the attorney general's opinion.
Okay, so I appreciate your explanation of that. If you can just go a little bit further, just so that I can understand, is that the additional funds that can be paid to an elected official, is that going to be an increase from the state to us, or is that an increase that we need to figure out on our own?
That just means that, that the county is allowed to approve that, their salaries up to that statutory maximum. With elected officials, they can only receive a pay increase at the start-
Of their term.
-of their new term. So if you're in office and then you're elected to another four-year term, then you can receive a pay increase at the start of that second term, but you can't receive it within the four years after your term starts.
Okay, so let's, um, let's talk about like, so this commission seat, when they come in, if this board so approves, would all three commissioners then, at that point, be eligible for that pay?
No, it's only the, the one that's coming into office.
Okay.
And then in two years, when the other seats come into office, then they should be eligible for the same increase. It doesn't, um, a long time ago, they used to raise them in accordance with, I'll refresh my memory, but, as the employees got raises, if it was five percent, they'd do five percent up to the statutory maximum. At one point, they took all the elected officials to the statutory maximum under the B under classification. Now that we're at B over, there is more room there for those salaries to increase as revenues available.
Okay, so would Linda's office then not go to that increase because?
It would be, um, the next election coming up is-
The clerk, the treasurer, and the commissioner would be the only ones in this 2012-
That would go-
-that would go for a raise. And then in 2014, it would be the assessor, the sheriff, the other two commission districts, and the probate judge.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. I just wanted to understand it. Thank you very much. Go ahead Tracy, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
If you look at the, the budget recap, this shows, these are estimated figures, the unended, unaudited end cash balance is an estimated number based on the revenue pattern that we've seen over the course of this fiscal year and the revenue collection that we've seen coming in. We arrive at the estimated end cash balances and I always try to be very conservative because I hate to have to go back and we're looking at operating, if those numbers come in or going to state it, it hates to have to go back in, in cash. So I always try to project those very conservatively. As you can see, the general fund, with, with the expenditures that we have requested from the department, the reserve department is nine-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which we can easily meet that requirement based on this budget that we have. We sent the, the budgets request out to the departments and told them that they could do a three percent increase to the operating side of their budgets only. That total to the general fund is roughly forty-one thousand over last year's expenditures. There is also a sheet at the very back, there's a revenue analysis sheet that I did. This is just kind of a, a snapshot of the last five years and as you can see, from last year to this year, we're looking at about a six percent increase of revenues to the general fund, which is about two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars. Whether that actually comes to fruition or not, that's what we look, that we're going to, because those are projected revenues to collect from now to the end of the fiscal year. So we'll have those actual numbers at the beginning of July and what was actually collected. So these are based on projections. The prior years are based on actual revenue collections.
Are these conservative projections?
They're based on, it's just, it's just a standard formula. We look at what we've collected to date, we take a monthly average and multiply that by twelve.
Okay.
So there are things that we only have a one-time payment, which is small counties assistance, PILT, which hasn't come in yet, so that one's always kind of a guess because it comes in right within the last two weeks of the fiscal year. It should, it should be right around two-hundred, two-hundred-and-forty thousand. That's our estimate from what we received last year.
Okay.
I don't think DFA really has those, those figures until the money arrives from the federal government, so it's depending on what Congress funds.
Okay.
If you look at the second page, I did the analysis for the road department and the jail fund, just because these are the three major funds that the county's responsible for. All the other funds have to operate within the monies that they receive, that are allocated by grant. The road department, as you can see, is down. The revenues are down about thirteen percent are projected here from last year. That's a loss of revenue of one-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollars. That's kind of concerning. They only have to have a one-twelfth reserve, but that's practically the whole reserve. So we're going to have to really keep a close eye on that and there may have to be support from the general fund to the road fund to, to keep them afloat. The jail fund is down about seven percent and that is primarily due to the House of thirty-sixteen money. That money, we don't really know how much we're going to receive each year. It's based on total number of state inmates that we have in first rate of the general fund, so that one's a hard one to predict. So we've, Joy and I put together the final numbers here and from what the departments gave me, all of their, their budgets looked good. They're all very conservative and kept within their three percent operating increase. So we did have to, to cut a few expenditures from the general fund, from the, not from the general fund, from the road fund, to make them balance out to get their one-twelfth reserve. We'll revisit that in the operating budget. It's much easier, once we have final numbers and we know what collections are, to project the revenues for next year and kind of look at the trend over the last five years to get an idea of, of, you know, what's a good number. So this is the interim budget based on the projections from information that we have currently and from what the departments know about their grants awards and that type of information. I know there was a few requests for fiscal assistance from the commission. There, there was, well, Chair Tracy, the increase requests were, we got a, a request from a VITA for an increase of five thousand dollars. We also got a request from USDA for the predator control. I believe you guys each got this letter, but I didn't have a copy, but also they're asking for an increase of fifteen hundred dollars. We usually give them twenty-seven thousand to fund our portion of the program and this year they're asking for twenty-eight thousand five hundred. The extension budget, while the extension program has been revamped a little bit, they gave us a couple of options. One option was to keep the offices the way they are and that's actually a reduced county portion. And then they gave us an option for three agencies, secretary, operations, and maintenance. And that would give them some assistance in that office for a program assistance. And that would actually keep the county's portion where it is, basically about a hundred dollars less at eighty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. So those are the fiscal support requests that I have received, that I think you guys have a copy of as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Would this be the appropriate time to discuss our commission concerns with the budget, or do you still have presentation to do, Tracy? Just kind of in thinking about the road department and also discussions that I've had with Martha, it's troubling that there is a decrease in their budget. And I've always kind of had in the back of my mind, if at some point we can consider using the allocation from the wind farm and dedicating that to the road department in hopes that at some point we could have actual salaries in the road department that were comparable to other county agencies that have equipment operators, because I think they're significantly, you know, paid very low. So that's something that I often think about with that money, because I know we do use it and we get requests for it. Different requests come in, whether it be a VITA or the juvenile justice board or a ban, which is nice to have that money available and then it's also nice to have it as a cushion as well, in case there's some, something unexpected. But I really feel like I don't know another way to really help that department get more money, because there's not, like, we're going to have more gas stations come in and I know that's one of their revenue sources. So that's an idea that I've been thinking about and I just kind of wanted to put that out there.
I wanted to point out one thing that you mentioned, you know, the gas tax is what is down. The gas tax revenue is the motor vehicle, the miles maintained, that is their main revenue outside of their project money and the third one, those revenues are all down and they're decreasing and I think that's just due to the economy. In this budget that you have in front of you, there is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the road fund to help meet some of the shortfall, but I don't really think it's going to be enough.
Okay.
That's just my concern. And the wind health is not restricted by any agreement that we have. It's strictly up to the commission, how you want to handle that funding. I believe we have some allocated to, the thirty thousand to the juvenile justice board and we have that in this budget as a transfer. That department did put in a budget for that money, so we're going to transfer it into the juvenile justice grant fund, so that all their money's in one place and it's easier for them to manage. That does leave a balance in the fund. You have a loan payment of sixty-five thousand. And then that leaves- About a hundred-and-fifty thousand available.
And there's a shortfall of a hundred-and-sixty-six?
Well, it really depends. We're not going to know what the shortfall is to the road department until we get any cash balances and we know what their final revenue is. It's really hard to predict that because it just depends on what happens between now and the course of the fiscal year. I mean, if they have a major equipment break and a major expense, then that's going to definitely have an added benefit to their end cash balance. So that's, that's really the determinant, is where their fund ends and, you know, what revenues come in. And I don't know if there's, I know sometimes we, and Dorothy can probably elaborate more on this, we see kind of a flux, like one month, you know, what's distributed by the state could be low and the next month could be high and it could be the third behind or somebody didn't report something and so they're playing catch-up. So it's really hard to predict those revenues, but, you know, we do the best that we can base some information that we have. So, I mean, something great could happen between now and then, something bad could happen between then and then, so it's kind of a gamble in the last two months. But we should, we should have the ending numbers by the week of July ninth. And I would like to have a budget workshop sometime during that week to go over all the revenues and what came in, the projections for the operating budget, and that'll give us a little bit more information. Interim budget just is what carries us from July to September one. It's really just for three months period that we use the interim budget and then we gather all the final information and make better projections and we'll have a better idea of what's, what's available.
Okay. I know I still always want to advocate to the end for a new building for all of the staff to work in as well, so I just put that out there on the table.
Vanessa, can I say something?
Yes, now.
It's just a thought that I would like for you. I know that the commission has already made the, the going out for the tax, but I really think that if we were specific and went to the public for the road department and it be solely a road department tax that we're asking for, something specific, I think that is something that we should really seriously think about, because that way we won't be relying on whether gas taxes are coming in, things are coming in, or supporting our road department solely. And we've gone to the taxpayers and we've asked them to help support it too. So I, I would just like for you to think about, thinking about going out, because we do have the one tax that we could go for and we could be very specific when we ask the public to vote on this bill, that it be spent only on the roads. And I do think that that's something that we should think about.
I think that's a, a very good point. I do think that that is, if it was specific to the road department, I could see it being supported, because certainly that's a great need in our county, so I think that's a good point, definitely. Tracy?
That tax is also available in different increments up to a quarter, I believe. So it's not like you would have to enact all of that once either, so, but it does have to be enacted through elected.
Okay, thank you. So we're at the table, commissioners, any comments or recommendations?
I, uh, I have, surely have no problem with, with increasing, you know, the budget for the road department. I think they, towards the end of the fiscal year, they began to scramble trying to find out whether they have enough monies to complete projects and whether they can, if, if we do happen to have floods, if we have something that they can cover emergencies and stuff with, then I have no problem with transferring some out of the PILT money or the general, the general fund. One of the things that I've been thinking about on this, and maybe fellow commissioners can think about it, is that last year we had a section that was able to show some cost savings in their area. And they were trying to figure out if there was a way to get a, a salary increase without cutting any type of services or anything. And applaud the, uh, the initiative to try to do that. And I think that when we're talking about salary increases, you know, whether with the road department or with treasurer's office or whoever, I think if we gave each section the opportunity to say if you can find a way to save two and a half percent without cutting any services, I would be willing to move that into a salary increase countywide, you know, without an extra cost to taxpayers and without taking away any services and let them basically take the initiative to find their own savings.
I think that's, um, is that doable, do you think? I mean, I think it's a great idea. Do you think that it would be possible?
I think it is. I mean, you might ask the departments that are here, I mean, they know what their budgets are. Everybody has, some have small budgets, some have big budgets, so it just-
There are probably some that you couldn't and we might have to-
It'd be kind of hard, sorry. We've gone down that road in the past, but you got some departments that have a huge budget and you got other departments that are two man teams, so how do you compare?
Usually the ones with the bigger budgets have the larger staff though, so they're going to have to have significant savings somewhere to-
Make it happen?
To make it happen for their-
Dorothy?
I do have one of the smallest budgets, because I have given up a lot and it would be a little difficult, but I do have another fund that we've worked with really hard, which is with the mobile homes, that I don't know if that's allowable to transfer from one fund to a general fund. I don't know. But I'm also asking, well, it's a PILT, if it's being used for many different things, like helping grants and helping others, couldn't we use some of that PILT money to help budgets that don't have it for increases? I mean, that's, that's money that has come in through PILT, that if we can help other departments, like in grants, the juvenile justice, we can help all that, why can't we help like the assessor, the treasurer, the clerk, the sheriff, whoever, I mean, you know-
If they do need it?
-if they need it to help for increases on their employees and, you know?
I think, you know, that would also be another opportunity-
Yeah, because-
-you know, to, to look at.
Because I, I feel that, that our employees have worked very, very hard and they're always put in the back burner. We're always having to cut our budgets so that we can be approved from DFA, so that the budget will go through and we cut all of ours, but then through the year, you have all this others that come in and, and you give them money from the PILT or from other things and increases and we're still in the back waiting. You know what I mean?
Yeah. And, and I agree. And I, I think there's something that could very quickly be looked at, you know, but I, I would like to task the sections to come up with what they could and, and if your section could come up and not picking on you Dorothy, could just give an example. If it could, but you could only find where you could give a one percent, then I believe that we could look at our extra monies that we have, maybe come up with the other percent and a half-
Yeah, and that's, that's what I mean. That's what I mean.
Or it may be something that when we put them all together, instead of giving a two and a half, maybe a two percent with all of us working together to try to achieve this. But it's something that I think that I would be willing to help look to and to help support, you know, that we do this. Like I said, the idea came from the employees, it did not come from me. It came from the employees themselves. If we can cut these costs and still give the same services, why can't we put some more meat on our table?
I think that that's a, a very good point. One of the things that would make me a little cautious about it, like say for instance in the road department, just some positive feedback so that I can understand. Let's say we challenged you with this task, would one road go undone to make up for that or, do you know where I'm coming from? Or would it be a little bit from each line item, or could you help me understand how you would look at it?
Well, right now, the way we were looking at it, we had a, we had a couple employees that had quit and they're making way over the minimum entry level position salary. So we were thinking of using that part just to spread it to the guy without having to even cut the extra employee that we might, the entry level position, amount of money would still be there, but just to be a small increase for everybody off of that same money that was on there.
Well, that's a good idea.
You know?
And that's what I'm on the line of thinking, is where we can find the savings without cutting any type of service.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, now.
I think that because this is what we have been doing for the last few years, that's why we've been able to get to the point where we are now.
Yes.
Because, you know, we were in a deficit, we were having lots of issues and everybody working together has done the same thing in their budget by cutting and at the same time trying to serve the public and do as much as we can to, to still do the service that we need to do and yet with less, less money.
You bet. And in the past, what I've looked over in the past budgets, you know, that have been there to try to get a grasp of the things that are going on, I asked Julie one time about borrowing money from the road fund and there were years that the road fund was, money was borrowed from to help support the other sections. And I asked her if it was ever paid back, because to borrow the money, I think it's, I'd like to go to the bank and borrow money and never have to pay them back. So, you know, it's, it's something that we could all work together on to try to get. When I look at the elected official salaries, you know, that's what got me thinking about the, you know, I don't really see how it would be fair for me to be able to take a, a raise and Janice not be able to, you know, in the same line of thought. So it's something that we need to think about and to keep our employees, the ones that we have the experience, the ones that have the knowledge, I started selling them somewhere down the line for a higher wage. And we've had, I know firsthand, we've had that with the road department. Operators learn their skills, they get their CDL, they get the things that they need and then they go to a private contractor for fifty, seventy-five percent more money.
Well, that's a good point and I think that's kind of why I mentioned earlier, Commissioner, that maybe it would be possible to kind of look at what other equipment operators make and maybe find a way to get to that point, whether, you know, I don't know that it would be doable immediately unless we kind of looked at that money and dedicated it, but certainly I think it's something that should be looked at so that there isn't turnover there. But Commissioner Topia, what are your thoughts?
It's a great idea on the tax, but I'm, I'm sure that you guys can agree with me, most of the constituents that are out there already say, I pay taxes, why aren't my roads up to par? So it's going to be a hard sell and we'd have to be really looking at how we're going to explain that. I mean, for me, once I explain that, you know, it's gas tax in the county that helps fund the roads and so that's why, then they're like, oh, the taxes that I pay don't go. So, I mean, it's a great idea, I, we just have to be very, uh-
It'd have to be a great-
... We'd have to, because that's the only, because like I said, in their mind, it's, I already pay taxes, so why aren't my roads getting done?
I agree a hundred percent, but it's a great idea.
Yes.
We can sell it.
Yes.
And the people do want their roads taken care of and our road department is one of the greatest there is. They do with nothing. And I think we should try to- And I think we should try to help them, and this is a way we can try to help them.
Well, it's educating the public is what it's doing, but like I said, the campaign to do that is gonna have to be very strategic, because...
And it can be done. It's just making up our mind and saying, this is, and I think if we're very specific about that tax, and we don't let it go anywhere else, it's road department, road department only, then they'll trust us, and then they'll vote for it.
How about, as far as time-wise, Linda, is that an initiative that would come forth in the general?
I don't think we could get it done by then, because we've got to have public meetings, public meeting, and I would have to have it done by the first week of July. There's just no possible way we could get it done. But I do say, I think we should plan it, do it right, and we could always have a special inception in January, February, somewhere around there. That's what I think we should do.
If you need to make a motion, I'll make the motion that we move forward, you know, into looking into that.
I don't, that was a question that we can't. It's been on previous agendas, but it's not on this agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that, I mean, it would be great, why don't we put that on an agenda, and maybe some people from the public would be excited to see that there, and we could start putting some feelers out, but certainly I think that if I were to be in charge of that campaign, I think that we could sell it, really. I think it was a good idea.
I think it was a great idea.
And I'll move that we put it on the next agenda. It'll be in that meeting where the public is, is more attentive.
How, how would you guys like that worded? Because the last one didn't go over very well. When we had it on the agenda.
Well, we get stopped. Uh, you can put, come all ye faithful.
Maybe a discussion of a...
Consideration.
Consideration for a road tax.
It's the capital allocation.
And that's, we had, it still has to be called the capital allocation.
Yes, the capital allocation.
Dedicated to roads.
And the dedication...
Dedicated to road improvements.
The dedication of, of tax ordinance is in the actual ordinance, in the third one-eight that we went out to voters, the third one-eight for the student tax. That one, by ordinance, is dedicated to the road department. So that is a revenue stream of the road department, that is the third one-eight. That is imposed countywide, but it's an eight.
Okay. Commissioner Topia, I'm sorry that I cut you off. Do you, would you be in support of that being on the next agenda?
Okay.
Okay, go ahead and continue with your concern.
But I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, no, it is a good idea. Like I said, we just have to be very strategic on how we sell it.
And I think we need more time than just two or three months. I think we need a good six months to really put a P.R. campaign together, and have lots of public meetings, and, and make sure our public's informed that it's going to roads, and this is going to help our road department.
Could it be tied to a different election, like a school board election or anything else?
There's just actually no way to tie it with another one.
Okay. Oh, should I, Commissioner Gray?
Yeah. One thing that I would like to see happen, and I know this was discussed this last year, but a panic button for the Treasury's office. That's something that I want to see. I know that it started out as just the Treasury's office, and then it kind of spread to all offices, and for me, I think, in the time that we're living in, yes, you know, we have the sheriff's department right here, but that's something that I would like to see happen.
Do you remember the dollar amount that it was just for your department? Do you remember, Nick?
It's about eight thousand. Well, just for their department?
Just for the Treasury.
Well, we don't have that cost.
I believe it was a little over eight hundred dollars for the...
Was it for everything?
Can I, uh...
Yes.
Betty and I had talked about, as a matter of fact, Betty's office suggested this, because we're still concerned, and it's not a panic button for when you have an irate taxpayer, or when you have that. We've been handling that for twenty years or over. You know, we can take care of those things. This is more for like a robbery, or a weapon being pointed to us, and Betty and I had talked, or Betty suggested it, that maybe even if we could get, and that's not gonna be that expensive, it's probably less than five hundred dollars, a panic button where in my office, to Betty, Betty to us, where we could protect each other. You know what I mean? Like if we have something really, you know, by the time we get to the sheriff or whatever, they could go to the sheriff. You know, if I had a problem where I could alert their office, they'd say, hey, there's something serious in there, then they would go get help, vice versa.
Without alerting the person that's there?
Without doing a big old alert, just where we can help each other out, and that would even work.
What about then if it's that simple? But if just an intercom between the two...
No, you don't want an intercom, because they can hear you. If you've got somebody holding you up.
I'm going back.
It could be as simply as a dedicated lamp, that you can turn the switch on and relax inside in the other office.
We have it in our...
Because they have one.
We have it from the, to the probate judge, to us, because the probate judge is in an office, and we just, there's a little buzzer, and ding, and we know something's wrong. It's very simple, easy thing to do, and I don't think it was that expensive, was it, Nick? Nick, you helped us do that. It wasn't that expensive.
It's just a doorbell, you buy it for...
Yeah, yeah, just, just something, and it would be cheap, but at the same time, you might be saving somebody's life.
Absolutely.
And that was my concern, is like, I need to alert somebody that I got an issue, especially when we close at four o'clock to balance. It's very easy for something to happen in our office, and nobody even knows what's going on. But yet, they're next door, and they're there till five, five-thirty. If I got an issue in there, they could be alerted, and they would get us help.
Okay, that's a great idea.
And it's cheaper.
I think we can...
It's cheaper, and at the same time, we're, we're getting help if we need.
Okay, thank you. Tracy, you got a comment?
Yes, I don't know the logistics of how this actually works, but I worked as a night auditor in a big city several years ago, and that was naturally a concern, like, two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning, someone coming in and taking all the cash. And there was a device that was put in our one-dollar area on our register, and if that dollar was moved, the police were there in a matter of minutes, because it sent some kind of an alert to the nine-one-ones there. And I had that go off several times when I was training new audit night auditors, who would go to give changes, like, they'd never take that doll, you know, that last dollar out of there. But when they took that last dollar out, we ended up with law enforcement there, and it was, granted, we were in a large city, but it's going to be just as, as fast as it would be whether, you know, we had a light or calling into another office, only this would go directly to dispatch. And then I don't, I don't know how they would just, it works, but, well, we have law enforcement there often.
I think it might be a good idea, possibly, to have the elected officials or department heads that would like that in their office, maybe just have a small, like, committee meeting and decide, do we want a light switch? Do we want a door bell? And then whatever you guys all collectively agree upon, then we just put a dollar amount to that and just get it done. I mean, I don't think we would even have to wait. Do you, Joy, to the next budget cycle, or...
Well, we, we did that, and it went through the steps of getting that, or, or the system put in for all the offices in the building.
Okay. So how would we like to proceed?
I think if, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking, I just remember when I was little, we had a little intercom, and if you push the two buttons, it beep, or you can hold it down and talk, but if you push the two buttons, then the, on the other intercom that's in another place, then they know, because they're, all they are hearing is bzzzz, and then they know. Or you can hold both buttons down and actually talk, and they can, so I mean, it could be something as simple as, as that, so we just have to...
Yeah, and I don't, I don't want to say, well, you know, like, I don't care about the other departments, or, you know, them having a panic button, or whatever. My big concern is the treasurer, because we do have all the money, and all the other departments bring the money to the treasurer. So, I mean, they may need something to get alarmed, but we really need to get to the point right here, it's the Treasury's office that's gonna be collecting all this money, and there's times during taxes that we handle lots of cash. And like I say, we do close at four o'clock, there's many things that can happen in my office between four and five-thirty that nobody would even know about, and this is a robbery, uh, somebody getting killed, somebody getting hurt, and that's my concern. And when Betty, when Betty said, yeah, when Betty said, hey, maybe we can do something between our offices, and...
Which is like a light switch, or, I mean, we could just decide right now.
Well, that's something that, you know, I'm not in the tax department, so I wouldn't know which would be the best, but something that I could let Betty know, like, what maybe the clerks have, just something to...
I think, I think something like what the clerks have, like a doorbell, or some kind of buzzer.
Yeah, that I can let them know, they're gonna know, somebody in her office, Victoria or DeeDee or somebody.
And you could, instead of going to the sheriff's office, if you could go to Betty, and then Betty...
Yeah.
Anybody, like, somebody in your office...
And the same thing with us.
Pick up the phone and call the sheriff.
And, and that button, or whatever, has already been discussed, that it's not for irate taxpayers, it's not for somebody that's coming in yelling at you and throwing things at you, that's not what it's for. It's for a life and death situation.
Well, I think we can make, I mean, we can't make that decision right here, but Joy certainly has the authority to say, Nick, or whoever she would like to have in charge of that, to give you either a doorbell or a light switch, and just get it done, because I think it's very relatively expensive and very important.
I think, if you're the commissioner, just say, go to get it in.
Agreed. Okay, your next item? Did you have a list, or? No, I'll make it. Okay. So why don't we then go back to our requests? Is this the appropriate time, Tracy, Joy to talk about the request from Evita and the other departments, or do we need to make that as we go further along?
No, you can talk about it now. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One about Lonnie's comments about the, the money from the road department. This budget cycle was the last payback of that money, so all of that money's been paid back. We've paid it back over a few years. That's kind of what's helped them stay afloat, where you really notice, you know, the, the decrease in revenue wasn't as big of an impact, because it's been slowly decreasing, but I think that, you know, that's gonna fluctuate with the economy. The other comments I wanted to make was that when we prepare the interim budget, we're working on the revenues and expenditures based on April thirtieth. And I took a glance back at the Treasury's report at April thirtieth last year. We had twenty-seven thousand dollars in the general fund. Dorothy and I were in extreme panic mode, and this year, we have eight-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in the general fund. So the departments in the general fund have made, you know, conscious decisions about spending money and saving money, and, you know, so that, that helps when the economy's not so great.
Well, Tracy, when's the last time you had a six percent increase in revenues when the economy's been this bad? That's amazing. It's amazing what's going on. It's amazing that we're a B and over, and that's due to an assessor's office that has worked so hard to get our assessments up. Good job. To the Treasury's office that have done a fantastic job collecting taxes, to a sheriff that has done an amazing job of keeping costs down, and doing whatever he can to keep the costs down. So I want you to realize that it's a big group of people, that being over, to me, is amazing. Eight years ago, we were looking at D.F.A. coming and taking us over, and today, we have a higher taxable value than Sub Coral.
I applaud all of the sections working, you know, I continue to talk about the team effort, all of us working together, and I think it's a tremendous contribution that all of the sections give to keep the costs down, and to come up with eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars more in the budget is outstanding, is simply outstanding.
A lot of that is attributed to the detention fund not being such a burden that it used to be. So the sheriff's department really has done a good job of managing the inmates, making sure they're not lagging in, in prison, and they're getting out, and they're getting adjudicated, and where they need to be. That has been a big burden lifted, because that was always of a big picture, how are we gonna make this? How are we gonna find that? You know, it was pushing over a million dollars at one time. It's not a major revenue source to fund that, it becomes primarily from the general fund.
Well, I thought it was nice, too, that from the extension office, that they too can add an additional person, and yet stay within the budget that we are used to paying, so, you know, I think it's just across the board, and that's, that's wonderful. So why don't we begin there? Do we have, why don't we begin discussing that? Because there was three options that Joy presented on that request, and I felt comfortable with them adding an employee, and staying at the cost that we were used to paying. So would you ever like to comment on that?
That sounds fine to me. I think they've done a good job, and I think they can go ahead and open that, I think that's...
There were, if I can just interject a little bit, there were two options, and what happened was the New Mexico State restructured extension offices in the smaller populated counties, and so our county lost an agent. So the two options that were given to us were for two agents, a secretary, operations and maintenance, and that would be a reduction in cost of about thirty thousand dollars for the towards the portion, because we fund twenty-five percent. Or the second option would be for the two agents, the secretary and program assistant, plus operations and maintenance, which would bring them to about a hundred dollars less than what we fund them at now for our twenty-five percent.
Has there been discussion from that department to your office in regards to the increase in service that we get for another staff person in there, or has there...
The discussion that they've had with us, or with moving an agent, it puts a burden on the two agents that are there, and if they had a program assistant, it would help them tremendously.
Well, I'm in support of that.
I'm in support of the assistant also.
So next, we had Evita, which was a five-thousand-dollar increase for cost?
Yes, their contract is up this year, and we had a three-year contract for twenty-thousand a year, and they asked for a five-thousand-dollar increase.
I'm very much in support of the Evita increase in serving on the executive boards of what firsthand is a corded, different manufacturing plants, for whatever reason that they've not come in, you know, it's beyond our control at this commission level. But we have the wind farms, and they're working night and day to get this started. We did meet with them, and they discussed starting construction in two thousand thirteen, and having managed some operating, hopefully by the end of two thousand thirteen. And I think a lot of that is contributed to Evita coming in and making sure that the landowners are taken care of, and making sure that everybody meets with everybody, to we're all under the same umbrella, as far as getting this going and bringing in the revenue.
Commissioner? Are we talking twenty-five thousand for the next three years, or we can say, well, for this year?
You guys...
I don't want to, I don't want to lock in the twenty-five thousand for the next three years, we just don't know what's gonna happen, and, you know, I don't, I, I think we're one of the agencies that contributes the most to them, and, I mean, although I, I get what they do, and I, I think we need that, that help from them, I just don't want to be locked in with, oh, gosh, that's...
Three years ago was the first time we had a contract with AVIDA. And the commission, you guys have pre-contracts, so that's a chart description.
Mr. Tuck, if, if you feel that maybe it should be, maybe not locked in, perhaps we could talk to them that we could go ahead and locate the $25,000 this year with kind of like a conditional permit, that it's subject to be renewed. And that's all it takes is that we prove to renew the contract each year. So you have a two-year extension to the one-year contract. And that way, we'd give us the option, you know, that if we come into a budget shortfall, we would have the option to cut it back. Or if we come into a landfall, we could have the option to increase it.
I'm just curious, do you know, Lonnie, do you know what the City of Loria already been paying the Saints to do?
I believe it's $5,000, at least.
My thought on that particular request is, I don't remember sitting through a budget. And I could be, I could be wrong, so if I am, who would like to correct me? But I don't remember sitting at this table and there not be a time where we talked about an increase to AVIDA, which, might sound ironic to say, I don't know that I want to support that. And then in the same sentence, say I'm an advocate for economic development, because I am. So I'm slightly concerned about it, because when investors come to our county, would we be better served if we spent that additional $5,000, say, in climate and zoning to support the cleanup efforts in our county? So that when a potential investor comes here, it's a nicer place to see. You know, I just have different thoughts about, could that money be spent in a different way to help advance just making our county better for when people come? But I don't doubt the, the importance of that particular organization either. I guess I just would like to see something for that, for that money, you know? And also, are the municipalities being tasked with an additional increase in their gaming as well? Or is this only to the county?
I think they're all, you know, being tasked as to what they can, Commissioner. It's, it's, I know when we've had our Executive Board meetings, we've discussed about more potential investors. When we've met with senators and congressmen that have come in, they're very positive. And they're speaking of what AVIDA does in Washington, and what AVIDA has done not only for this county, but as far as helping other counties in the tri-county area here organize and try to attract businesses. We have the Greater Albuquerque government for economic development come in and speak with us. They're working with Myra, because they've flat run out of room in Albuquerque to expand. They are bordered on almost all of the sides by reservations. And some more companies are looking for the rural areas to expand to.
Um, please, I don't know if it's a question for Joy or the Commissioner, but I would. When I sit on the General Justice Board, I'm not able to go on things that pertain to that. Sitting on the Executive Board, do you still retain a vote on a request to increase for that board?
I can refuse myself if you believe that is.
Well, I'm just asking.
I mean, yeah.
I guess I would, I would just have to say that I would not support the request. And I would ask the commission to possibly consider, if we have the $5,000, would we possibly consider using it for a youth-to-work program? Or a summer program where kids could maybe come volunteer in the road department? Or come get some time of an internship within the county? To find a way to give back to the youth. Also, you know, I know the General Justice Board is working very hard to do that as well. But I would like to advocate for that. So I don't believe at this time I would be in support of their request, even though I truly do support economic development.
And I'm kind of following along those same lines. I just, I think, like I said, for me, I believe that we, we do need AVIDA, and we do need them here. You know, I'd like to see the $5,000 be, you know, if it's possible, be put into the swimming pool in the town of Estancia, because I know that they, you know, have some shortfalls, so, you know, there are other programs.
And I would support that, because they do employ lag guards. They support youth throughout our entire county to go during the summer.
Is this something that they have to have an answer right now? Or it's something that we can kind of gather some thoughts?
We don't approve the final budget, as Joy.
So then, can we have AVIDA come and do a presentation between now and then? And to kind of give us a rundown of what has happened in the last year? And maybe it would help the chair to have a better feeling. Like I said, I just, for me, the $5,000, we just don't know what's to come.
You know, if we're going to allow them that, or can we possibly? Just hearing about what the town of Estancia is doing to support the swimming pool. I know that, I think they were, it was a garnish of money from Senator Diego, I'm not sure. But that's a one-time thing, you don't know about the future, so.
The mayor's on the next commission agenda, so can talk to the commission about the claim?
Oh, great, okay.
He's been planning that for several weeks.
Well, and then, as I said, if we can, if we can watch to come and communication and kind of sort of down what's transpired over the last year, then maybe that will help us to.
I will invite them, and I believe that the president was planning on coming during the budget workshop. Because that's usually when entities come and ask for the requests. But for the record, we have not talked about an increase to AVIDA in three years, because we've had a contract. But for now, we'll take that $20,000 to $5,000 out.
Yeah, because I think I remember. Okay, what was the other request? Were there three?
USDA, that's not in the commission level, it's in Sub Coral or Sub Farming Range. We normally give them $27,500, which concerns Taylor Gray's case. But they are asking for $28,500.
I would be in support of that request.
So would I.
Is there any feedback from anyone in the audience? Any, you know, officials, staff, test?
I, I would say, if you have extra money, that, they're asking for extra money. And if you have that extra money, you kind of, again, this conversation with the road department issues. Maybe instead of gifting that around, you could point in their direction. That may be another way to help them with their shortfall.
Any other comments? Well, I'd really like to thank you, Linda, for bringing that to our attention earlier in the meeting. I mean, that's, if ever a tax increase would probably be looked on favorably, I think it would be in that instance, so. On behalf of everybody, I think, thank you for, for thinking of that. I think we had a successful meeting. Is there any other items that we need to discuss?
I do want to give you, it's a letter about our raises. And it will help you to kind of understand more that if we don't receive any raise for the clerk and the treasurer and the county commissioner, we're set for four years. So I, I'd also give you a packet that has all of our, for several years, what we've made. And that we've been at the statute for the past eight years. And I do really want you to think about, I mean, our employees. Yes, we're going to look in our budgets, and we're going to scrounge, and we're going to find as much as we can to give our employees, because they're well worth it. But we also have higher revenues. And just in my office alone, we've had the slowest year ever. But I am taking in $16,000 more this year than I did in last year. And it's been the slowest year ever. If we pick up any at all, that's just going to increase and increase. I think that our employees deserve an increase. And we are doing well. We're doing good. We have come from rock bottom to a B and over, and that is amazing. And that is, you need to look at our taxable values and look at what these guys have done. They've done a great job. And I am hoping that you will really look and honestly search your heart. They deserve a good raise.
I think that everybody, thank you for your, for your presentation. I think that everyone at the table shares that, the same opinion as you do. Well, it's a fact, you know, and so. But I think it's always good to kind of cast the departments, because sometimes they come up with something that you're like, well, that's a great idea. And maybe that would inspire another department to think outside the box.
I agree 100%. But there are a lot of departments that have cut and cut and cut and cut to get where we're at. And there's no room to cut.
Yeah, and if they can't, you know, they can't.
And that way, we can, and, and just because some can't, we, we don't do it all. Let's work together as a team and get everybody a shot at it. That's what I think we need to do.
I don't disagree with you at all. Thanks.
We do also have something that's not in the budget, is the State Land Office has asked us to pay for that right-of-way on those roads. I did talk to the State Land Office earlier this week and told them that the road department was GPSing all of the roads and that we were finding some discrepancies, and they said that was fine. They'd be happy to take those into consideration and recalculate. But we are going to have to pay them some money that's not in the budget, however we decide to split that up. So that is an unexpected expenditure this year that will probably, more than likely, be needed to be put into the commission budget.
Now, they'll just pay that out over three years.
Over three years, correct? So that would be approximately $10,000 a year that we would need to pay.
I think at one time, Dorothy had talked about, and I don't know if this is okay or not, so just correct me if I'm wrong, but if we paid more, I think you had told me once, if we paid more of the employee benefits, they would see more take-home pay as well?
They would, but it would be very unfair to those that don't take benefits.
Oh, not at all, okay.
I believe we could pay a portion of the pay, or imagine what the tax or rent would be.
Well, I think we can come up with something, what, when would you? I think the staff would probably want a, what do you expect from us and by when? So that we're moving along, so that we meet the budget deadline of consideration for the increase, so.
Thank you for, yes, for the first meeting in June.
In June, okay. Well, my plans are, Commissioner, is the, there's two budget hearings that we're going to have in July. We want to be on the July 11, I think, we want to be on the July 25 meeting. The interim budget is due to DFA by June 1st. I still have to convert this budget into DFA's form, and that will take me about a week to do. This was put on the agenda today for approval of the interim. That just gets us to submit on June 1st. And then we're going to go into the, the budget hearing on the operating. And I don't know if we want to think about a special meeting to have the departments come in to where it's only budget that we're discussing? Because we can do that also. We will have the final numbers around July 9th. So anytime after that would be an okay time to schedule a special, we call it workshop, we call it hearing, whatever we want to call it, for the departments to come in. But we can, when I send out the information for the operating budgets request, we can put that in there, you know, please look in your budget to see if you can find a two-point fire or whatever term it comes to. And then they can come at that, that point and present what, what they're, they're looking for with the operating budget. The operating budget is due to DFA July 31st. So that gives us a time. But I just wanted to recap to make sure I have everything that we talked about. So we're funding the animal damage control at $28,500. That will change the transfer from the general fund to the Farming Range Fund from $25,500 to $26,801. And AVIDA is remaining at the $20,000, and the extension is being funded at $6,800. Yes. Do we agree?
Yes.
Okay. So with that, is there anything else besides relation to approval?
On the B over classification that we have, I just wanted a clarification on that. Talking about the elected official increases. If, that doesn't mean if you say, yes, we will put those number, those higher numbers in, that doesn't mean that you automatically get them, that we automatically get them? Isn't it just getting that available increase there? And that the commission could still say, gee, the way we are, we can't give a raise? But, but to have that, to have that extension there, or I?
As far as if there is no increase at all for our office and Dorothy's office and the commission for four years, no matter what they, we could not increase. We have to have an increase as when we go now. You can't get an increase until 2014.
Right. But my question is, if we say, okay, the assessor's salary max would be $57,000, or whatever that number is, I apologize, I don't know it exactly. That doesn't mean that, that the next assessor in '14 would automatically get it? It would still be up to the commission to say, we'll only give you $5,000 of that? Or maybe say none of that? Okay, okay.
The statute says.
That's what I was, I'm sorry, I mean, I didn't state it very well. Because that's what I was wondering, that it would, and then, is that part of the operating budget? That would need to, when does that definition have to be put in there? Oh, for the operating budget? Okay, okay.
And the statute says up to a maximum? So it doesn't have to be that amount, it could be anywhere in between?
Right, it can be anywhere, that was what I was getting at, was it could be anywhere in between. None at all, or anywhere in between? But there is that availability for it to go up that much, as long as we are an over B, now that we are an over B over.
We could not have got a raise at all. The reason we can get a raise is because we've been reclassified. They have not changed the statuteated amounts. That was, we had gone to the legislature to ask them to change the statuteted amounts, and, and they vetoed that. The reason we are allowed to do that is because now we're in new classification. We're actually a higher taxable value than we were before. So yes, there's anything in between from where we are.
Up to that maximum.
But whatever you do, whoever it is, is set for four years. There's no changing anything within that four years. Whatever you decide to date is for four years, for that. Then, when theirs comes along, you can make a different decision on that. And theirs would be set for four years.
I have a question regarding that. If they did elect to increase the elected officials to the max, then automatically are the chief deputies raised to the 98%? Because that's been policy, and if the chief deputies make 98% of the elected officials.
95.
95.
It's 98. Is it?
Yes.
Yeah, 98.
That was agreed to a budget several, several years ago. There is no statute, statute on that.
So does it stay at 98, or is that up to the commission's discretion as well?
My suggestion maybe is, if you want to think about it, those, those items are coming up for operating. You can think about it. coming up for operating, you can think about it and maybe put it on the next agenda or the first meeting in June even, to discuss maybe the guidelines that we wanna set forth to the departments to look for, you know, this is the maximum salary increase that we're comfortable with, because that would be the whole budget, you know? And kinda what you're thinking of along the lines of the elected officials, how we do it, to kind of think about it. And we'll need to come up with protections of those elected officials' positions and their chief deputies of what the general fund would probably need to transfer to those budgets as well, to cover those increases if they were granted.
So, was that a good clarification, buddy?
Yeah, I just, well, I just wanted to clarify that because my thought on that is, I think that the, that, that maximum, that new maximum should be set, uh, as long, I mean, 'cause since you don't have to do it, but I mean, if you don't, if you don't set it, then you lose it. And I think it should just be...
No, that's not...
You don't listen.
It's, it's set in statute.
Oh, in statute.
This is what the legislators say that you should make at this level. That's set by statute. It has nothing but, the 57 is always gonna be there until the legislatures decide to raise it again. So, that's set. They can give anything in between what we're making now and the 57, but they can't go over the 57.
Right, right, yeah.
So, that 57 is set in statute.
Okay, so it's not, it's nothing, they don't have to say, yes, in Torrance County, we're gonna, we're gonna put that there because adding a statute now that we're that reclassified? Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize for not understanding that.
It's confusing.
Thank you. Makes sense, okay.
Nick, it seems like you're just pondering, like light bulbs flashing. You just wanna sleep on it, or...
No, I'm just thinking back from when I first started to where we are today.
Oh, yeah.
Probably a good feeling.
It's a great feeling.
Ups and downs.
Okay, so, I will now call then for a motion to approve the interim budget.
Sure.
Thank you, is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. I will now call for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So, I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Thank you.